Twenty twenty-three to order. But the record reflected all council members are present for tonight's meeting. Like to remind anyone who wants to make a public comment tonight to fill out one of the yellow comment cards on the table by the door and to the city attorney sitting in front of that table by the door. After you fill them out, if you have a cellphone, please make sure that you've got your ringer turned off. And if you would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
No, the flag.
Yeah.
First item tonight is the approval of the meeting agenda. Is there anything that we are adding or taking off? No, right? Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt the meeting agenda?
I make a motion that we adopt the meeting agenda.
Second, we have a motion in a second, all in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. Next up is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March seventh twenty-three. Can I get a motion in a second to approve those minutes, please?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes, March seventh.
Second.
With a motion in a second, anybody need anything changed or added to those? If not, all in favor of adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
We have no proclamations or presentations today. Next item on the agenda is public comment, which is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and provide their input and opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing tonight. When your name is called, please come forward, speak into the microphone directly to the council, first state your name and address for the record. You're allowed three minutes for your personal remarks. Rick, do we have any public comment?
We do. First up, Diana Wilson.
I'm Diana Wilson. I live at eighty-one thirty Cockham Road, and I'm the chair of the Chadatu Hills Park Commission. As you know, the city of Chatham has two parks connected by eighteen miles of Chatham River. Hamilton Park at the north end of our city and the new Chat Hills Riverlands Park at the south end of our city. Your Parks Commission is working hard, along with other organizations, to develop the vast potential of these resources. To give you an example of the potential, near twenty sixteen, for the forty-eight miles of the Chatham River upstream from us, north of Atlanta, the economic benefit was one hundred and sixty-six point six million dollars. The work of Chatham Riverkeeper has made it possible for those of us south of Atlanta to enjoy the river. For over twenty-nine years, they've worked diligently to clean the river. Just a little over a week ago, the Parks Commission hosted two cleanup sites as part of the Chatham Riverkeeper's annual sweep the hooch. About sixty-five volunteers working at those two sites collected one point six five tons of trash. And on that one day, at the sixty-two sites on two hundred miles of Chatham River, with fourteen hundred volunteers participating, they removed thirty-two tons of trash from the river. And keep in mind, since we are south of Atlanta, a lot of that trash would have ended up down here if they hadn't removed it. I'd like to thank Parks Commissioner Roland Alston for leading the cleanup at Hamilton Park. Assisting him were Parks Commissioners Chip Denton, Pat Lesko, and Clifford Blizzard, and City Council Member Camille Love. At the boat ramp, five miles upstream, which is owned by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, Mayor Tom Reed and I worked with a group of about fifty volunteers from Cox Interpre. I'd like to also thank City Manager Robbie Rockovitz for his support, including the really nice porta potty and hand washing station. And I'd like to thank Parks Director Daryl Winlet for his diligence in the ongoing, never-ending task of cleaning the boat ramp of the silt that is constantly dumped by the Chatham River.
Thirty seconds.
And also for helping us dispose of the twenty-five tons that we collected during the cleanup. Soon, thanks to the current work of Trust Republic Land and previous work from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, both Hamilton Park and Riverlands Park will have boat ranches, picnic areas, restaurants, pavilion, facilities, and parking lots. And so more and more people will be able to enjoy these beautiful rural parks on the Chatham River.
Next, Danine Crawford.
Danine Crawford, five-five-seven-five Cockramell Road. And Mr. Alton Powell emailed the Citizens Committee again with this concern. He said, please forward this to Darrell about the condition of North Atlanta Noonan Road. I fully understand the mess involved in sewer pipeline construction. The disruption on my portion of North Atlanta Noonan Road is expected, and we have adjusted to it. And our conversation about you waiting until the sewer line is completed before you come back in and restore things to normal is noted, but this has gone along slowly. And the steep unpaved portion of this road has deteriorated with ruts and deep potholes at the bottom, which has nothing to do with the pipeline accompanying the normal construction process. Perhaps you might come and fill in the potholes and ruts on the steep unpaved portion of North Atlanta Noonan Road, which is our only access to town with Rico Tatum being closed. This is one of the steepest unpaved spots in the city. I know the crew is loaded with unassignments or with assignments, but those of us on the unpaved portion of North Atlanta Noonan could use a bit of help. We understand messy construction, but this small section needs attention. Thank you, Alton Powell. Some other citizens on Woodruff Road and Cockramell would like to not have their trees on the roadway trim like the city is currently doing. They fear it will cause disease to the trees and distort the scenic view of our roads. Another citizen has complaints about the heavy dump truck traffic on Hutchinson Ferry Road. They said it is constant from Atlanta Noonan Road to the end of Hutchinson Ferry at Highway seventy. And said it starts at about seven-thirty in the morning and just is continuous all day long. Many citizens have reached out concerning a possible town hall meeting prior to the vote for the movie studio application due to their voices not being heard by the city council representatives. They would like to know if there is one on the docket or if anyone is planning one at this time prior to the movie studio application. That's all I got this month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mary Ellen Goode.
Yes, I'd just like to say a few words. My name is Mary Ellen Goode. I live at eighty-seven oh-one Wilkerson Mill Road. Excuse me. My land borders on in the side in the back of the new petition for the event center on Wilkerson Mill at eighty-seven thirty-five, I believe. I would just like to say I'm against the petition because the area is not equipped to handle the type of traffic noise, and it's a rural county road. I mean, we have lots of woods and area that we're not equipped with any of that. Chattahoochee Hills is supposed to be a land conservancy where you're, and I don't understand why you're allowing pop-up businesses in the area that are not in a ham. The thing that draws people to Chattahoochee Hills is rural living and allow anything and to allow anything into the neighborhood that would draw hundreds of cars on a very consistent basis is not what is healthy for the neighborhood. Thank you.
I'm Maria Hansen. Address is eight-one-three-five Atlanta Noonan Road. Um, I just wanted to give a shout out to all of you. As our council members and city staff, you devote so much time to your roles, and I appreciate that. Big ups to you, Robbie, right? Hey, Robbie, for managing all the moving parts of the city with efficiency, creating lengthy and detailed newsletters, communicating with citizens via email or phone. It takes time. You're making difficult decisions which can affect our citizens' daily lives. I also know I can reach out to any one of you on the city staff, and I'll receive a reply with answers or suggestions. We have so many volunteers, which we just heard about a bunch of them, who help organize events, clear trails, pick up trash, build out a dedicated art room, help with the pantry and the library and much more. So if any of your constituents feel the urge to throw shade at someone here, I would be happy to ask them to take a minute and find out how they can volunteer or contribute. And I'm sure you don't know this, but it's impossible to make everyone happy. I am proud of our city staff, council, and all our commissions and appreciate all your hard work and immense patience. Thank you.
Next, Shonda Hill Smith.
Good evening. My name is Shonda Smith. I live at seventy-four forty-nine Petersburg Road. And today I'd like to speak on the special use permit for property at eighty-seven thirty-five Wilkerson Mill. A variance is a form of equitable relief, allowing the applicant to use his land in an efficient way by bypassing local zoning laws. It is granted for an unusual circumstance, like a narrow stream or narrow lot, something that impedes the intended use of the property by the owner. The special variance or special use variance allows the property owner to then deviate from local zoning standards, and it's an exception to regulations governing the use of property. However, a restaurant, a wedding venue, an outdoor terrace, a cooking school, a private residence, and a daycare pretty much exaggerate the intended use of that permit. This board weighs the hardships of that local regulation. However, it's us as the citizens, the residents that border that property, that travel those neighboring roads, who are going to carry the burden of your decision. The property owner will have to comply as we do. Living nearby will definitely impact and harm our quality of life, our property value, and so those things must be considered. The proposed use will change the spirit of our neighborhood and will infringe upon rights, use, and enjoyment of land. We already know how how sound travels. We've already discussed that on previous issues. You can hear an issue on Wilkerson Mill. It sounds like it's in your house. That's how sound travels. So to magnify that by weekend events, everything from Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, large events, is definitely going to impact our environment negatively. And so with the traffic impacting already narrow roads already strained by current commuters and commerce in our area coming off of Cascade Palmetto, any global positioning device is going to then send it down Rivertown and then down Petersburg. And there goes our quality of life where we enjoy evening strolls, communicating with our neighbors. We enjoy the quietness of our neighborhood that we researched thoroughly, and we knew what we were stepping into, and we were in agreement with that. That's what we wanted to be a part of. And we thank you to please allow us to continue the life that we have built with our time and with our resources. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, Janice Martin.
Thank you. First of all, ditto everything Maria Hansen said. Thank you. I've been alarmed and concerned by some of the dialogue at recent council meetings, specifically language like, we're at war, no one is going to tell me what to do with my property, and so forth. We adopted a vision to support smart growth in the rural aspects of our city. We elected officials to implement that vision. There is today intense pressure, I believe, on council members to rethink that plan. I, among many others, support our zoning and believe that without it, our parkway will soon look like Highway nine between Roswell and Alpharetta, one strip mall after another interspersed with gas stations and subdivisions. Our council members have a thankless job, and these meetings are often demoralizing. To those of us sitting here, I can't imagine what it feels like to you. I was especially upset last month when our female council members were compared to Stepford Wives, because one man thinks they are voting at the whim of another man. With all due respect, I don't believe any woman in this room, including the women at the table, need a man to tell them how to think or vote. We've been doing that for a long time. So Camille, Ruby, and Lori, I'm sorry, you deserved better than what you got last month. If you believe in the overall vision for Chat Hills, I think it's time to start stepping up and speaking out so that your voice can be heard. Thank you to all council members, each of you, and Mayor Tom Reed. We are grateful for your leadership, your vision, and have high expectations that you will vote to preserve the beauty of this city while carefully evaluating every opportunity for smart growth that improves the tax base. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Gloria Edwards.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Edwards. And I'm here to discuss, I'm just gonna read off this quickly to is in reference to the work session I sat in last week and an ongoing situation. Okay. Both concerns are regarding gunfire and always has been made clear in our conversation on the board and as we speak by telephone way or here in presence. The safety of our lives, property, neighborhood, and numerous gunfire in a reckless manner was done that would change our lives forever if a stray bullet ricocheted as Mr. Avon Colvin and my daughter have spoken to you all about repeatedly. Nuisance, yes, but our main concern has always been the safety issue. We started our calls and come in here over a year ago from your advice. We let you all know it had worsened. The types of weapons they possess are their business, but when those shootings in the air and across property, it is surely not their business anymore. About three weeks, I received a copy of a sample ordinance drafted that you all had requested from the attorney to review and put together. And we all said this is hope. We all, meaning my neighbors here, said this is hope. Even a hundred yard would buffer and give us the protection and safety we need to come out as opposed to retreating inside. Last Thursday, work session sat in a to, I sat in a total dismay after the attorney addressed the draft ordinance. And Tom asked the police, was the complaint from us primarily nuisance? And he replied, yes, in which this was not true. My emails will support that. You said, Tom, well, since their concerns are already in the state ordinance, and they are, there's no reason to address this. The kicker was when Richard looked at the attorney and said, sorry, man, we wasted your time. Wasted time to help us. We are human beings. We are citizens, and we came to you. This is the mayor and council that voted. My, my second thing is after that, you all eagerly turned to Chef Rob and his party, I mean, Event Center to give him the thumbs up. He even went outside and took a picture of whatever paper you had given him. What is rule when you can request a permit for a party zone in the midst of our community? It makes no sense. You want to do something long-term for residents here? Keep it rural. Get together and revise that zoning ordinance that is antiquated. Thank you.
Next, Lenora Johnson.
My name is Lenora Johnson, and I'm emotional right now because I'm the one worked for Fulton County Schools, Special Need, for many years. I don't retire, came here to live in a rural area, which I am one mile from my daughter's house that lives in Carmel. I live on eight-seven-two-five Wilkerson Mill Road, where the gentleman wanna put parking lots, hundreds of cars, one side, the activity center on the other side. That's me sitting right there in that middle. Y'all got me in a box. That's not nice. That is cruel and disrespectful to even think to put me in a box like that. When I moved here, I just knew I was in a good place to be retired in. I drove the Special Need, Fulton County Special Need School bus many years up and down these roads, picking up children, taking them back and forth to school. Even go to the park of Rico Road, we would take just for them to have an activity to see things, feel things, and to know the area that we was in. I picked the spot out. I spent all my retirement money to come here. And now I'm getting a letter telling me that you all are rezoning it from a rural area. Don't care about the neighbors or the citizens that don't already live there because someone decided they want to put, what, activities in cars up and down the road? Okay, this is me. This is his property. This is his property, but that's me right there. That road coming that way. Coming that way on my house in the back of me. All time of the night. That's what I be getting. All time of the day, all time of the night. He already been inspiring. I woke up one morning just to relax and go outside, because I always peek out my door and look around, see how pretty the weather is and look, just look around. Almost a hundred cars. That close to my face. I was devastated.
Got thirty seconds.
I disapprove of what he's willing to do, and if anyone up here is voting, I'm sorry. I disapprove when you say yes. My answer is no, no, no. That is not fair to the citizens. That is not fair, and I still say no. I still say no. I'm very emotional about what y'all trying to do to me. Put me in a box. That's a box. I'm in a box.
That's time.
Thank you. That was the last one, Mr. Mayor. All right. Next up are our staff reports. We'll start with the finance update from the city manager.
Raise this up a little bit. Thanks for everybody for your patience with the sound. We got the sound guy here with us tonight. Evening, mayor, council, members, staff, citizens. Welcome to April. I'm told April showers, brings May flowers, so lava. April showers are going to bring teaball. It's gonna come. Hang in there. We're gonna get it. But your financial report I have in front of you is for the March twenty-seventh, all the way through, just through March twenty-seventh, and it's about seventy-four percent of the fiscal year elapsed already. We are now currently, you know, engaged in the active process of doing the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget, which starts on July one. And I do have some drafts of that budget prepared right now. It's a work in progress, but we're, you know, obviously we're not close, but we're closer than we were before because, you know, we're starting getting some final revenues in and expenditures going and such. But as I stated every month, let's say every month about the financials, I do have the financial newsletter that I do, and it's actually helpful to me to do these reports, and this is online, too. It's just kind of an extra little thing I do. I call it the citizens report, and it's more readable thing. So when I look through, I can say, all right, where are we at with our general fund? How much have we collected our fiscal year? Well, we're at seventy-four percent of our fiscal year, but we've collected four-point-five, four-point-three million dollars of our revenue. When you look on here, you see it's nine-point-seven-six. You're like, oh, nine-point-seven-six. Well, that's not our general fund, because that's also including grants that are up in there with our federal grants and the L-MIG and a conservation grant. And it's also including our fund balance, and there's three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in that we got from GMA when we did the lease on the fire truck. So we paid three-twenty-five, we got three-twenty-five. So I don't want anybody to get confused when they see those numbers. That's why I do this report. It's a little bit more understandable and easier to read. So that, that's the way we collected one hundred and one percent of our revenue so far at seventy-four percent through our fiscal year. We've expended seventy percent of our general fund. That's our general fund, because, you know, we have other funds. We have our T-Splus fund. We have our technology fund. We have our grant fund. You see all the capitals fund, all those down there. Hotel motel fund is at seventy-four percent. The fund balance is going down because we're using it. We're spending it like we're supposed to be doing. T-Splus is going up. We talked about that before, that we're, we're trying to get T-Splus to collect and get to where we need to be. Because as the mayor mentioned in the previous meeting, we were, we're gonna do a two-point-four million dollar probably T-Splus project. That's twice as much as what we usually do. So we're getting that T-Splus up. We're gonna use our state and local federal relief funds to do a great project, working on that now. Hopefully let it by midsummer, late summer because of the schedule that is on, and we're gonna get some paving projects going, and it's gonna be some significant paving projects, which includes striping and so forth. So we're looking forward to that. Everything else is going normal for our spenders. Nothing's out of line. Everything is in consistent, in good shape. I'm glad to answer any specific questions. Councilwoman Smith, I know you, you asked last time, I think you got your answer about lost. It's still reporting here through six months of the year because it's two months behind, so we don't have January and February in there yet. It might be there now. My show might already done it before I did this, because this is March twenty-seventh. But it's about ninety-seven thousand dollars we're collecting a month. So I just want to make sure you got that. It's good. It's gone up. Yes, sir. So I wanted to make sure you got that answer as well. And, and any other questions you guys may have, I can't answer it now. I'll answer it at a later time.
Probably that increase. How much was that increase from where it was before as far as the ninety-seven thousand figure?
Oh, you mean by month?
Yeah.
We, I mean, we used to collect around, you know, fifty, sixty, that kind of range, but it's gone up because of the sales tax and people spending more money. And also things cost more. So you gotta remember that with what's going on right now with the economy, things are costing more, so the sale tax are going up with that. People don't notice that as well. Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, these are online if you need them.
Looks good. Next up is a fire department report from Chief Brett.
So a little casual look for me this evening. Pardon me. That's true.
It's, it's not that he's ever gotten a hard time for having a lot of really nice uniforms, but he has probably gotten a hard time for that. So this is a special night.
Yeah, it's a big deal for me to be in casual. And the reason for that is I've been able to enjoy the last four or five days in on a vacation trip with my wife and daughter. So I want to, I had written in preparation for this report, I had written this informative piece to tell you about this carcinogen policy and procedure. But somewhere about yesterday morning, I was redirected. So forgive me. I'd love to answer your questions, tell you more about this, be glad to in a minute. But if you will indulge me, I want to give you some thoughts. Yesterday morning, I walked into the Fire Department of New York Station Ten. Firefighter Patrick O'Sullivan opened the door for me. Station Ten sits two hundred feet from ground zero, from the corner of where the former South Tower said. Do you know in that fire station, there were only twelve survivors of twenty-seven who call that their house on the different shift days? Here's what happened. For those firefighters at Station Ten on September the eleventh, two thousand and one, Lieutenant Greg Atlas grabbed his helmet, and he said, let's go pack out. That's our saving. And already eight other firefighters were reaching for their gear. And engine and ladder company ten responded. Us firefighters, we refer ourselves as crews. We are a team, skilled people working towards a common goal. And we are a winning team. To be a winning team, every To be a winning team, everyone must be devoted to each other. Always ready to protect each other and ready to pull each other to safety. If we don't win. It most certainly means others lose. I strive, strive to be a leader like Lieutenant Atlas. Ready to act, to be protective and strong so that when my firefighters and medical first responders and citizens are moved to action, that they do not hesitate, that they find confidence in our efforts together. I want to say thank you for investing in us your devotion. Supporting our vision, strengthening our resolve, regardless of the task or the sacrifice. The leadership and support we receive has generated major successes for everyone. We have a medical transport capable unit. We have a new three hundred thousand gallon tanker bumper, a new fire engine. We have new bunker gear that's no longer secondhand. We have an extractor as of last week, which is a fancy name for a washing machine that you wash bunker gear in to get rid of the carcinogens. And we have new technologies for firefighting and for EMS, including hydraulic tools and search and rescue equipment and life pack, cardio packs. A Lucas that the community helped to buy, thermal imaging. And we have people. You can't run a department without people. You can't look after others unless we decide that's what we want to do. Kevin Jones has been in this department since it began. Next month, we'll ask you to participate in making him a fire captain for shift B. Raphael White and Todd Clark are probably our newest. And they really want to be a part of our department. They came here for that purpose. They had a personal interest. Josh Whitley is our second longest employee, and he manages our training. Mitch Roach and Andy Coggins will tell you they just can't let go of being a part of Chattahoochee Hills. That's a quote. Tim West, who whose father lives down here on Woodruff Road. Chip Tyson, who retired, both reversed their retirement to join up with Chattahoochee Hills. All these things we've done together. Everything we do is for others. If you've gotten an email from me, the signature at the bottom reads, quote, non-sibi sed alice. Which is Latin for not for self, but others. So we're all on the same crew. Isn't everything all of us? Does everything, everything we do for others? I'm glad to serve you. My resolve is to continue.
You're lucky to have me here, sir.
Greg, I just want to say when people think of nine one one, they have that image in their mind. When you're just talking now, I have that image in my mind of our police and our, in our fire department going to serve Chuck Miller when his house exploded. Going to help a lady in Little Fawn subdivision deliver a baby in her home. We're just so lucky. We'll never have any, hopefully, we'll never have anything catastrophic like nine one one. But these other things are catastrophic to us in a small community, and we're just so fortunate, not just for you, like you said, you were king. And thank you very much for serving.
I appreciate the confidence each and every one of you still is to give us room to operate and do that thing that we're here to do, and that's what we're gonna do.
Thanks, Greg. I don't envy you following that, Jim. Next up is a report from our police chief.
I spent the last week in the Cayman Islands. Before you have my monthly report for March. And again, you know, it's a recurring theme. If you look. We're averaging five point six six calls per hour. This is a two hundred twenty-nine point seven percent increase in the same month last year. And then the other, you know, and the majority of that business, again, you know, it's not coming from city residents. We're serving those that pass through or come here to work or play. And that's where the majority of those calls come from. And specifically, I want to speak, you know, on our investigations, you know, we have one full-time detective. We are a small department. Like Chief Brett said, you know, we're blessed, we're fully staffed. We have good equipment and we have great people that, and you know, we do a lot with it. But we're being stretched. The, the social media again. Didn't quite get it right. We did receive a call referenced, this even remains found. We did respond out there. That appears to be what it was, and we contacted the GBI and they've taken over the investigation. Have a lot of answers on who, what, why, where, when. The GBI is investigating. I do know the DNA tests haven't been completed yet, so we don't have identities. But yes, that, that did occur. On the north end of the city, which is not Hutcheson Ferry at Carlton Road. Somebody posted that it was there at the house with red dumpster. That's not, that's not the north end of the city. I asked again, nobody's reached out to me except the media on details for this. And I ask you again, please encourage your constituents if they have questions or concerns, reach out. Degoo or myself will be happy to discuss any cases or calls that they're hearing. And I do monitor social media, and we try to correct some of the information because I don't want the community alarm. If there's no reason to be alarmed. And this call, on this one in particular, it appears that it occurred somewhere else and that they were dumped. Is what it appears. And when I posted, there's no current threat, and if people started questioning why it's not a threat, how do you know that? Some things I can't share immediately. But at that time, I try to get that information out as quickly as possible. But again, please reach out. If you have concerns, if you have questions. I'm always happy to talk to you. My door is open. My phone number is public.
Is there another set of remains found somewhere besides on the north end of the city?
Not that I'm aware. I mean, you weren't called out.
Just a question.
Okay, no, sir.
That's one of those things, and I'm just gonna say it again, because we've got people in the room, we've got people watching on, on Zoom. While we do try to monitor Nextdoor and Facebook and all the different ways and places that people can post things about what's going on in the community. It is not a way to get a police response. It is the worst possible way to get a police response. If you need something, call nine one one. If you're seeing something that is concerning to you, call nine one one. Call nine one one. There is a non-emergency number on our website. It goes to the nine one one operator anyway. So again, at the end of the day, you're calling nine one one. And that is the way to get a police officer to respond to anything that they should be responding to. One of the things we also remind people, you know, the city is big and we are close to a lot of other jurisdictions. There are times where your cell phone might hit a tower that is in Douglas County or in Coida County or somewhere else. Please, when you call nine one one, tell them, be sure to tell them you're in Chattahoochee Hills. We need Chattahoochee Hills and Fulton County Dispatch. Because it just wastes time if they're trying to figure out where you are. So just a couple of things to keep in mind. One other thing, this conversation's kind of been ongoing, and I want to make sure that people understand what, what both Jim and I have said in different meetings. We are currently fully staffed. We are staffed at the level that our budget allows and what we have passed in our budget. And the amount of activity is going up because there is so much development around us, warehouses, trucks, going through all the things that we see all around us. And we absolutely would like to have more police officers. Jim asks for it regularly. And those two things can be true at the same time, and they are, right? So I just want to be clear with people on what we're talking about. We are fully staffed, and we could use more. Anybody else have any questions for Jim?
Just like that. When you call nine one one, they're going to ask you some questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so it's called EPD, Emergency Police Dispatch. There's a protocol. So you need to know where you are. They're gonna want to know your name. You can't say, I want to remain anonymous. The reason they ask for a callback number, oftentimes you also get out to the, to the call and not observe the behavior that's being reported. And so they'll ask to call the person back for clarification, make sure, one, they're in the right spot, or they're looking for the right thing. We don't keep track of who's calling, who doesn't call. We, that, that is part of the protocol that to get the information they need to dispatch the right resources. And oftentimes, especially if you live on Hutcheson Ferry or in that area, it may be a Palmetto officer that gets to you first. If it's an emergency, we have a mutual aid agreement. And it's an emergency, and there's a Palmetto officer closer, that's okay. We're coming too. But if, you know, again, with our staffing, we may be a few minutes out, and so it may be a Palmetto officer, and you see, and that's why that information is critical to gather, so that we can get you the right people and the right resources.
Thanks. Alright, next up is a report from our Public Works Director, Darryl Blenland.
Hello, Mayor Council and residents. Good to see all y'all. A few things. Ball season was supposed to start a couple ways ago, and the rain has just been, and we got more rain a hundred percent Saturday. Sad. But, but even though the crews still work during the week and have the ball feel ready, just, just in case something happens in the weatherman wrong, which they're always fifty percent wrong. I can get a job doing that. A few things, the right of way, cutting right of ways, we continue to cut, cut right of ways around. It's an obligation we have to do in the city. If not, it grows into the road, which comes a liability to the city. We have to do it. Also, plus, you know, we have a lot of deer here. It sure is like, nice going down the road and see a right of way cut open, where you can see them. Of course, I love the canopy. It's beautiful. And that's why we try to be delicate how we do it. We just don't go, if you go to other counties and see where I come from as well, they cut it back and they just rip it. And we try, especially in front of residents' homes. If you have a house on the road, try to be very gentle with the trees in front of yours. If there's not a home there, we just cut it back as best we can. We are, we do, it's like we all say, it's hard to please everyone. Half the people want the gravel roads scraped and beautiful. The other half, I like it rough, because it slows people down. And then half people want the grass to grow, the other people want it cut. It's hard. So my job as a director is to do what's right. What morally and ethically right and keep, and I always look as a law thing, as in being responsible and have obligation. We have a responsibility to maintain these things and do the things that I do. I have obligation to do. That's why you hire me. Also, the, the, I want to talk just a little bit about the film, what I, my part, I take in the film, the filming that comes through the city. I try my best when we, the film people come in, they put application, and we meet many times with these people and to find out what, where they're doing. And property owners do have rights to their property. They have the right where you can, you just can't stop people. But I'll keep it off of filming of gravel roads, because I know when I came here, that was the first task y'all gave me, to get these gravel roads in shape. And it's, and it's a continuous job all the time. And then, and then you start letting people film on these roads, you trucks, and they're not designed, the gravel roads are not designed for heavy trucks, up and down, up and down. And so we try to get them at the beginning to add money to the gravel. So the city as a whole doesn't make money off, off this film stuff. The, I think the only people that gain money from that is, is the officers that get to work part-time and even doing security, which is great for them. The city, the cost that we receive, we, it pays for our time to meet with these people to make sure. And what I've been doing is when, when I know my job is to make things, yes, yes, what, what can we do to make it happen? I always try to say, no, 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 no for gravel roads. But we have obligation to residents to make sure we try to figure out a way to work with them. So what I've been doing is on gravel roads, if it's a small section of road, try to work with them. And we've been having them add extra gravel to the beginning of it. And so we don't charge them to labor because the gravel roads already have to be maintained. They're all roads, but they're, they're offering money up to add gravel roads. We got ten loads on Phillips Road in that short section. We got ten loads on Jones Ferry, that section, which is, is taking a little bit of pressure off the cities. That's a lot of money. You know, you're talking average six, seven hundred dollars a load of gravel that they're paying us for. And then what we are, I'm working out something with them, is if they do damage the road, we have in a bond. And then the work that's done on these roads are gonna be after hours for us to do. So it doesn't take away us, the employees, because you know, we only got one scraping, one gravel crew, one grading crew, one motor grader. And so during the day, they, they're having to do what they do. And so anytime we take on additional work, it sets us back even further. Saying, because you know, this time of the year, we get a lot of rain. So every dry day, we can, we scrape. So what we try to do is after hours, we work agreement out. They, they hire us after hours to do it. So it doesn't cost the city any money. And I would make sure when I go through my process and I meet with Greg and Lieutenant Degoo and all the directors, Mike and Katie, we sat down at a table to find out what they're, you know, what they're looking for, what's objective. And I try to make sure I get everything I can from the very beginning, because when they go, they're gone. You know, I've said it many times, I try to make sure we hold them accountable. So we've been putting, we've been working hard the last few years trying to put things in motion, make sure we hold them accountable, money, bonds, and trying to get things done beginning. It'd probably be in the future that one of the things I'm gonna be asking the mayor and council to look at is y'all setting precedence on what we're gonna allow when it comes to filming on gravel roads. If it's gonna be something that we do, because right now, you know, y'all are looking at me and the burden's all on me. If I make a decision to say, no, we're not gonna do that, then they have residents upset with me because, you know, they have rights. And we all said that this is my property. I should be able to have that right, and I agree with that. But I can't, my job is to make sure the gravel roads and the roads are taken care of as best I can. Like, like Alton Powell's talking about that work going on. Yes, it does need scraping. I completely agree. But the trucks going up and down doing that job, and I think they're a little slower than what we all hope them, they should be a lot further with that project than they are. But they are communicating with me, and there's only so much I can do with them. If I go in there, scrape, add gravel, it's just waste, it's really a waste of your, y'all's, everyone's money. And I try to do my best to do my due diligence, is not spend the money just unwisely. Yes, sir.
You know, uses a movie, whatever, uses that at their property.
Locate film location.
Yeah, if they destroy the road, then the movie company and that written in there, the bond, they fix the road.
It's what it's supposed to be. And if, and the way, the way we try to do it is the if a film coming, film company comes and meets and we set that bond, and they've damaged the road. Yes, they are held responsible. We do everything we can, and we look to the homeowners or the property owners to help us with that. Because, you know, if they're, I know they, that is their property. And if we lean on them, because outside of the right of way, you know, there's nothing we can do outside the right of way. I can't, I don't, you know.
Correct. That's a different, that's a different agreement with the homeowner. What I'm talking about is the city road.
Yes, sir.
So what, what are we not doing that is making this such a hard decision to get them to fix the road?
Well, what we, what we, we are doing is just like Sardis Road, the last film people, they messed right away up. We held them accountable. They had, they, we made them from the beginning get a bond. And if what happens, they don't fix it, we hold that money, we fix it, or we pay somebody to fix it, and they don't get that money out of that bond back. That's what we're doing now.
So that tells me then we really, maybe we don't have a problem, because if they don't want to do anything, then we've got their bond money.
That's right. That's what we're working on. Yes, that's what I've been pushing, Richie.
That's what we need to do.
And that's what I'm doing.
Remember the guy who got us for forty grand?
That's right. Oh, yes, right. Okay. That's why we're getting bonds. You're right.
What is it, million dollar bond to work on a road?
We've, we definitely worked hard. If you notice, Sardis Road, they, they come back and they fix the road. And, and just like I said, on, if you notice, when you go down Hutcheson Ferry, they're filming at the corner on Phillips Road. And they're, we had them add extra gravel to the road, and then extra gravel going to the backside. So, and we have an agreement, the intermediate scrapes will be determined by now. So, and we have an agreement, the intermediate scrapes will be determined by us, not by the film. If we, if it needs to be scraped, we tell them, we have a contract with them. If it needs to be scraped, I say, hey, it needs to be scraped. We scrape it after hours, they pay us for the time, motor grader and oil.
Point, we, we really just hold their money.
That's right.
And so they get it done right.
That's correct.
They actually required to go through a, a separate insurance company.
They do a bond through the city.
Okay.
Daryl, is, is, is that a new process? And is it, does that process in place for every movie that wants to film on private property here?
Yes, ma'am, that's what we have been doing. We, there's, there's a process that, you know, like, there's, like, some people say, we've been doing this for a year. You don't realize there's a lot of process that we have to go through to get approval. Like when the commerce, Parks Commission want a trail built, they come to me, then I go to y'all, and then y'all talk to the residents. So it's a process that what we have to do, we just don't make a decision on the fly. It's a lot of input to it. But then we've worked on that and yes, ma'am, that is in place.
As, as a resident that lives on a gravel road, thank you for bringing that up. Cause oh my gosh, if someone wanted to film at my house on my skinny little gravel road, I'd have some angry neighbors. So we need to look into that.
And I would ask y'all, if y'all would do something for me, is when you leave, think about what y'all thoughts are on gravel road. Uh, filming on gravel road, because we did have someone called, called in, maybe today, they're wanting to set a crane up and do a water. Thing on one of our gravel roads. And I mean, when, if you can ask any of these guys, when we can sit down and meet, and first thing I say, gravel, no, no. And then, of course, that's, that's wrong with me. But I'm looking at the city's roads and, and it's hard. It's, I'm in the middle. I got residents I'm responsible to, to help you get, get, you know, what, with your property. But my obligation to the city, so it's hard, it's a hard job. So I'm looking at y'all to kind of help us drive this ship down the road, to see what we're going to do in the future about gravel road filming and, and, and such as that.
We'll talk about that more at the next work session. In the meantime, you know, I, I recognize that it is sometimes a pain in the butt for people when there's filming going on. And, you know, for people that have land or a home that is pretty or in a pretty place or whatever, it can be a really meaningful.
Income.
They pay a lot. And, you know, for Kenny or people like that. So it's, it's always weighing those two things, right?
Y'all have any questions for me?
Yeah, there, uh, just one question. Have we, uh, as far as, I mean, it sounds like a, a lot of responsibilities been put on your shoulders. I mean, in a lot of way, and I know it's a team effort, I'm not saying it's solely, you know, square on your shoulders. But, uh, have we, uh, have we had to reject any of the proposals for dirt roads? At all as of yet?
We, we have turned a few down.
Okay.
Because it didn't fit.
Right.
It isn't, and it wasn't, it was a lot of criterias that had to meet that they didn't come close to.
Okay. And then maybe, yeah, I'm like the mayor, we'll, we'll get together on this.
Yeah, please do, because that, that would help us make better decisions for everyone.
It's, it's always a balancing act too, because we did say no to one at one point. And I got a call from the governor's office about twenty minutes later, saying that they were gonna pull all of our road funding if we didn't. Yeah, so I mean, like, there, there's more to it than just.
Mayor, can you say that again? I didn't hear all that.
We got a call from the governor's office saying that we had to figure this out.
I understand. I, I, okay. I just wanted to hear it clearly.
Yeah, what happened is they wanted to film on the parkway. And that puts more prac- traffic on our, our, those that we already having problems with now. And we all said, no, we, we can't, we just can't do that. And they said, well, we'll do this and we'll do this. And they promised a million things. That's before we had things and, you know, more in place. And we did. And people called and called and called. They spent the whole weekend complaining about they got lost. Cause the direct detour signs wasn't correct. There's only, you had trucks going up down these road. They weren't supposed to be. They're supposed to stop them up at one sixty-six and they're supposed to down at ninety-two. So.
Anyway, it's, it's, there's just a lot to it. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Daryl. Next up is not Mike Morton, Katie. No, it's good that, it's good that spring break is a thing, right?
Okay, good evening, Mayor Council. I'm just gonna read off part of the monthly report. During the month of March, we had only one new single family building permit versus fifteen in twenty twenty-two. That includes both townhomes and single family homes. There were a total of fifteen permits issued overall in March versus thirty-four last year in March. There, I'm gonna just briefly update you on the studio application. That is coming out of the DRI process. And the city will be able to begin activity in the near future. The applicant would like to schedule a public meeting, tentative, tentative. They're aiming for the eighteenth of April. Yeah, and, um, lastly, uh, the planning commission meeting is scheduled for April thirteenth. A week from Thursday. The only thing on the agenda is the public hearing for the event venue that is on tonight's agenda. Um, I would be happy to answer any questions. I will do my best to answer them.
All right, we have no public hearings tonight. Uh, we have a couple of items that rolled over from last month. Twenty-three dash oh nine, which is the resolution, resolution, appointing the historic commission members. What I'm recommending, and I, I talked about this at the work session as well. Brian Gross, Amber Lightsey, Sarah Love, Lila Ryan and Kim Taylor Cloud. Uh, can I get a motion in a second to approve that so we can talk about it?
Like a motion? To approve item twenty-three oh nine.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Um, yes, I have some discussion. Uh, I admire all of those nominees. That you've made, Tom, but I do have concern because our charter states. The mayor will, um. Is it a pointer, a nominee, a point? Yeah, qualified residents. And I think you said in the work session, Sarah Love no longer lives here. Even though she's a, a val- valuable asset and, and even more so because of her job. I really think we ought to, um. Honor the charter as our, our highest order of, um, rules for the city. And I would not support her, but I support all the other candidates.
Just to, to clarify that too, and I, I went and talked to Rick about this last week, just because, uh, this is one of those places. And there are a couple of other things in the charter like this where. Pieces of the charter don't necessarily say the same thing. When we added the historic commission, uh, we had the same conversation as we had when we amended the language for the planning commission. Uh, I mean, not for the planning commission, for the, uh, Parks Commission, because we had a Parks Commission member that had been running the. The, the nature center for, for years and years and was just across the city line and, and wanted to be on the commission. And, and we changed the language of that part of the charter at one point when we're updating charter to allow that to happen. And when we were talking about creating historic commission, we were also clear in the language in that piece of the ordinance. That chartered that commission, that it would be okay if we had people from the outside. The charter does talk about commissions in two places. It talks about it at the front, where it just talks about qualified people. And then it talks about it in the mayor's section, about the mayor will appoint residents. So even there, it's conflicting. And the opinion I got from the city attorney was that we were okay to nominate people in these two. That were like this, the, the language for the planning and zoning commission says in it, in the planning and zoning commission language, that it has to be residents. And we didn't change that. And we actually had a lot of conversation about that when we were doing the Parks Commission and Historic Commission. About whether we should change it too, and the group at the time decided not to. Now, again, this is the body that will change the charter anyway. Uh, and so, you know, voting for this in spite of the fact that our charter says different things in different places is really up to us anyway. But I, I understand what you're saying.
And I would just like to say, um, so I read the information you sent before, which is a separate document. And it does look like it's well thought out, but here again, well, that was before I was on the council as well. We didn't take that step to update the charter. And we need to start doing that. There's several things in the charter we've talked about changing and we just keep postponing it. And I think if I'm not wrong, that that can only be done where the legislation is in session. So on and on we go. And at some point, we need to put a fork in the ground and just update it. So it is the ruling thing. Okay, that's all.
Laurie, on, on that change of the charter, you actually have, the, the, the council has the ability, has the power to amend the charter. There are certain provisions that cannot be, um, changed by the council, as we change by the general assembly. But that's one of the parts of the account, excuse me, the charter that can be changed by God.
So maybe you want to postpone this vote and then let's change the charter. I'd be okay with it. Or I'm only one vote, so my vote doesn't matter.
Let's go ahead and change the pieces of it then to alignment, because that is, we'll, we'll put that on the next.
But, yeah, and that needs discussion, because I still think that. Uh, we're over three thousand people, and I think it's important that the people that serve on our commissions actually live in our city. We do have qualified people outside of our city. But at some point, think about that, where that could lead. At some point, as you're, you know, appointing, uh, we have other commissions as well. I think you want to have residents be on those commissions.
Mary, can I get clarification? I don't speak very often. I was trying to pull my list out as you were reading the names and I, was Jean Griffith coming off?
He is on there.
Okay, and Kim Taylor Cloud was remaining?
She was coming off, no, that.
Okay.
No, and that's my fault. Sorry. So let me, let me reread the list. Brian Gross, Jean Griffith, Amber Lightsey, Sarah Love and Lila Ryan. Could, that, that's my fault.
Well, I, I, I just say this, Tom, I just know that, um. One thing that we, we, we've done a lot of over time is we've taken common sense to govern. And I think sometimes we've gotten away from that. But I think in this particular instance, um, you know, it's just like, everybody knows Mary Beth, she ran that nature center for years. And, uh, it would have been ludicrous not to have her as a part of the Park Commission with everything that she's done for this community. We're sitting here in the same, Sarah Love's mother lives right around the corner from me. She's elderly, I mow her grass. Um, Sarah is in our town a good bit. She is going to be coming back here one day. And the fact that, uh, somebody with that type of knowledge, I think if the historical commission's okay with it. Um, and I get it if it's somebody who is outside of our city or whatever, this is somebody who's born and bred here, that got married. It's gonna get back here pretty soon. So, um, I get it, the rules, I just think common sense outweighs whatever you write on a sheet of paper sometimes. And I'm okay with her being on it.
Any other thoughts? Go ahead and call it then, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I feel like, um, I understand Laurie's concerns about that, so if we can continue to talk about that. But with her unique experience and then the fact that she has been involved. And with the fact that now we really, I mean, we have three thousand citizens, really not, um. And she's very unique, I believe, being an archaeologist, that, that we allow her to continue in this role. This is my opinion.
And, uh, I concur with that. I believe that, uh, you know, we do need to rule from a common sense position, or not rule, but govern. Common sense, I mean, we would be losing a lot of, uh, input from people like that. And it comes back to this body each time. So it, it would, uh, you know, each, each one is case by case. So I mean, one shoe doesn't fit all, in this particular case.
You don't have to say, I'll just go ahead and call it. Can I get, uh, sorry, all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh nine with that slate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
That carries four to one. Next up is twenty-three dash oh one one, which is the resolution appointing the planning commission members. And I think this time I've actually got the correct slate written down here, so hopefully, voice of God will not have to correct me. We have Doug Cloud, Christine Gallagher, Patrick Johnson, Scott Lightsey and Rodney Peak. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt that slate?
Make a motion and we adopt that slate.
We have a motion in a second. That was Ruby here then.
Could you say the names again, because they're not written down and.
Christine Gallagher, Patrick Johnson, Scott Lightsey and Rodney Peak. Uh, we have Jet Haddaway roll off, Christine Gallagher will be replacing Jet Haddaway. All's in favor adopting twenty-three dash oh one, please say aye. Those opposed, nay? That carries the end slate, uh, condolences. I mean, congratulations, welcome to the commission. That is probably the hardest one to be on, so, uh, welcome aboard. Uh, next up are some new business items. We have twenty-three dash oh one two, which is an ordinance to approve a special use permit for an event center in the RL district. On Wilkerson Mill Road. This is a first read today. There's no action taken today. There'll be two public hearings, uh, before any action is taken. So again, this is an informative, uh, for the council. Katie, you wanna fill us in?
Okay, so, uh, we received an application from a Mr. Justin Robinson for a specialty use permit. For an event center large in the RL district. Uh, Mr. Robinson owns a little over twenty-eight acres on the north side of Wilkerson Mill Road, just west of Peterborough Road. This lot is mostly wooded with some clearance towards the front of the property. There's also a U-shaped pond towards the rear of the property that he shares with his neighborhood north. And, uh, there are single family residences to the east along and along the southern quarter of the subbed property. The specialty use permit would allow the applicant to use the property for events, mainly small cooking classes. And occasional wedding and similar type of events, no more than fifty to a hundred people, um, typically. According to Ms. Robinson, uh, he wishes to construct an outdoor kitchen and two buildings for events. Uh, those, uh, buildings would be located towards the center and rear, kind of towards the, the pond. Uh, not near the property lines. And according to the UDC, any structures built for this, this type of use, uh, events in a large. Must be set back at least two hundred feet from any property line, um, of a residential property. So they can't be any closer than two hundred feet to the, the property, um, on the right. And, um, I would like to note that the specialty use category called, is called events for large. It's because, not because of large events, because, um. Event center is small, only allows for less than fourteen events per year. This one would allow more than fourteen events. So it has really very little to do with the size of events.
It is the maximum size of the event that he can have with his permit.
Uh, that, it, we can condition it. Um, how many, how many people you, you want, you want him to have?
So each time he would submit a permit, he would have to identify the amount of people.
No, no.
If he, if he's saying that he's gonna have so many people, we could condition it to.
Condition it, so say you don't want him to have more than a hundred people at a time. You know, for these larger events, you can, that can be a condition of time.
Katie, so I'm, I'm confused on one thing. In one part of the zoning, it says for event center large, it'll be holding more than fourteen days of events within a calendar year. With a capacity of more than fifty attendees. But in the section. Seven four F, then it defines the facility. That it may be designed to accommodate more than, may be designed to accommodate more than the one thousand people indoors. So, which there is no upper limit on how many people they have unless we put a condition on it. Is that right?
I'm, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'll.
That, that is correct.
No, we know you knew, Katie, you just took it.
Okay, I'm trying. I, I just also wanna, um, point out one more thing about the EDC is. There are time limits on when they would be, when the applicant would be allowed to operate, uh, Sunday through Thursday, that's eight AM to ten PM. And, uh, Friday and Saturday, that's eight, eight AM to eleven PM. But again, if you want to condition that to be, you know, earlier than that, it's, it's completely up to you.
Fact is, we'd never know. I was concerned, my main thing was, I remember when he spoke, said he had spoken to all of his neighbors, except for one. Does anybody else remember that? Does everybody else remember that? Okay, well, either way, what I'm simply saying is, he made it real clear, he'd spoke to all of his neighbors but one. Can I finish? Yeah. He had made it real clear, he had spoke to all of his neighbors but one, and they were happy. Obviously, you guys aren't here because that's what's transpired. So we have a problem. You know, part of what we do here is we govern, we try to, you know, let people. You know, part of what we do here is we govern, we try to, you know, let people have their businesses or discuss them or whatever. But a lot of that does have to do with uh, you know, people's way of life also. And um blamefully, I guess, what's a nice word, telling a story to council does do you a lot of good. Either way, that's another discussion, I'm sorry.
Katie, so, I'm sorry. If, if you have an opportunity to talk to the applicant before the planning commission, this is just a suggestion, because it's not a requirement, but other applicants who have had signed letters of support from their neighbors who wanted an event center, it seemed to make a, a good bit of difference in, in the comfort level of passing something like this. On the other side of it, when they didn't have that and the council later found out neighbors were not in support of it, that didn't go well. So if you get a chance to talk to him, maybe suggest that he do that.
Hey guys, I'm on the call as well, just so y'all know. Uh, I've been listening the whole time, just, I didn't know when it was my turn to speak. Um, and also to the
It's not, this, this is not a public hearing, Mr. Mayor, we, we need to get We are not having a public hearing. So again, council can ask questions of the staff that is up. And that is what we're doing right now. That's all we're doing right now.
That's all I have.
I mean, you guys are welcome to
I can ask you that question, Chris, man.
You, you absolutely can ask me a question too.
You, you have to wait. May, maybe what we need to do with these event centers is maybe put in a little bit more language depending upon land size for what should be allowed, because depending on where your buildings are, on twenty-eight acres, depending on geography. I mean, I get it, you know, this is your, your way of life being um, tampered with a certain degree, but also understand people have the right to do things on their land. So maybe we need to uh, dive into that one a little bit more.
And, and this process is meant specifically for that, right? So just one of the things, for example, that we've done before, when people come in and say, I'm gonna be doing events of this size and on these days of the week, then you make that a condition, right? So there's no confusion about what was agreed to, for example. Uh, you know, those sorts of things, right? Like, you know, I know there was conversation in the meeting on Thursday about the open roof of one of the, the pieces of property. Uh, this is a process that we're going through. The process doesn't necessarily happen in the three meetings that it's scheduled for with us and the one with the planning commission. It could take longer than that because it is kind of open-ended and we have to tie up all the details before we even really consider it thoroughly, right? So that, that is absolutely the process. Thank you very much. And we will have more conversation about this. If anybody else
No, I just want, this is just a special use permit. There's no variance being requested. Okay, just wanna be clear.
Thank you. All right, uh, next up is twenty-three dash thirteen, which is an IGA with uh, Fulton County for the elections, Dana.
All right, um, what you have before you is the agreement to contract with Fulton County for the municipal election that is scheduled for November seventh. On page four, you'll see they have estimated the pro-rata share, that's our share of the cost of the total election at nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-two cents. And it's not mentioned in the agreement, but I just also wanted to mention that I'm working with Fulton County to establish City Hall as an early voting location.
All right, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh one three?
Motion to adopt twenty-three dash oh one three.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh one three, the IGA with Fulton County about elections, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Hey ma'am? Uh, next up is twenty-three dash oh one four, which is an agreement for electrical services for well-serving the Rico United Methodist Church.
I'll take that one again. Um, this agreement, um, when the city purchased the property behind City Hall and the little house from Rocky Reeves, Rico United Methodist Church had been using um, the well, their well, and it's hooked up to electricity for that the house that the city now owns, um, a very nominal bill every month. The tenant of the house also uses that electricity, I believe. So last year, a year ago, we formalized the agreement with the church and they're reimbursing ten dollars a month that probably more than covers their portion that they're using. That expired, so this just renews that agreement.
All right, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh one four?
Make a motion that we, that we adopt uh, twenty-three dash oh one four.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Some things seem much easier than others. Uh, next up is mayor and council comment. Uh, does anything, actually, I'm gonna just assume that everybody does. I'm gonna start with Ruby tonight.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. Um, just wanna say thank you for coming out. Eighty-seven oh one, Wickers Mill Road, I forgot your name, but thank you for your comments and your concerns. Eighty-two seventy-five, Ms. Johnson, I hope I'm not saying it wrong, but also thank you for your comments. I wanted to make sure that whatever uh, were happening, that all residents were at least know what was going on. And I sent out letters trying to get everyone to come and speak with Mr. Justin, because I want to make sure that whatever's gonna, what gonna happen there, that he would have those conversations with you. Also, Ms. Gloria and Ms. Sharon as well. So uh, I wanna thank you for coming out for that. Since we, we have redistrict and I, right now, um, my district runs from Rivetown Road and some of the Cockamamie Road, but I put some information over on the table. So my phone number and my contact information is on there, so if you would like to pick that up and you have the information to give me a call or anything, thank you.
Thanks, Ruby. Richie?
Yeah, guys, first of all, uh, park commission, um, where's Ms. Wilson? There you go. Yeah, you, you, you guys, all of you do a great job, and I know you've got a new undertaking with the Riverland Park, but um, you guys do a good job and we really appreciate that, really do. I know people like to thank you a lot, but the parks really do look good. Only concern is cocker me on that side of your hands, that's uh, your job, chief. Anyway, um, to Greg, appreciate it. You know, you guys and, and what you guys do, I know y'all have been out at my house uh, two or three times dealing with different things over the years. And um, every time been very professional, very helpful, yeah. Yeah, um, somebody mentioned a dump trucks and eighteen-wheelers all over Wilkerson Mill Road. And, and this is my, my opinion, guys. We hear that we're, we're staffed, we are fully staffed based on the budget or whatever. I get it, we need more officers. No question about it. Uh, we, we just do, we need more patrols. These things destroy our roads. It's conversations we've had. I don't know why they're not moved forward. Well, I think I do, but I won't go into that right now. But that's just what nee- needs to take place. You know, these, these, these trucks are everywhere. Those dump trucks do run on the morning. That's what they do. Right now, I'd encourage you to stay out the way of them and do what I guess um, chief says, continue to call nine-one-one. Hopefully, we can get somebody out there for you. You know, I understand you, is it Gloria? Is that your name, ma'am? Yes, ma'am. Lenora, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. I mean, I, I get it, you know, when, when we first you know, for those of you that know or don't know, I've, I've been up here twelve, thirteen years, whatever. Um, you know, the idea was to allow landowners to, to have some businesses on their land within, within reason. The idea was to have, you know, a couple of big setups, hamlets, villages, whatever. Over time, a lot of that has kind of dissipated. A lot of rules have been torn down. So when I say you're at war, you are at war. That is the bottom line. When you see zoning change before something comes before this council, to make it easier for something to be approved, that should tell you all you need to know. So I make no mistakes or apologies for anything I say up here. What I would encourage you guys to do, some of you, um, I've posted my number on Facebook. Everybody has my number. I do agree with the chief on one thing, I do find it pathetic how people can use social media to, I guess it makes them feel better, gives them some guts. Which that's fine. You should fill out your card, you should bring your questions here, and you should attend a lot more. Don't show up once a year because you heard something, acting as if you know the backdrop, because you don't. And um, you know, it is what it is. Um, I do understand your concerns, ma'am, about the gunfire. I really do. That would be very aggravating to me too. I deal with it too, right across the river where I live. But all I can say i- in that aspect is, uh, you know, when you look at the law, the law's very limited. And, and I'll have to go back to my police chief, you'll have to, you'll have to continue to call nine-one-one, I guess. And um, pray that they pull up and they're firing, and at that point, he can do something. Because I mean, the law is what it is, and people do move out here in the country, uh, but they have to be responsible, and I get that. I do. I just don't know where, where that separation is, you know? And um, I'm just not seeing it. And, you know, if somebody can show us something different, I'll be glad to entertain it, you know? But I know what it's like to have a nuisance neighbor. And, and I get that too. But my police chief told me nothing was being, was a, a public safety issue, so I gotta go with that. I, I hear you, ma'am. You know, just like you said, ma'am, you're in a box. We need, we need more discussion about this. What I mean, and, and the big thing is, you know, we became a city, we wanted to observe all this. We're, we're slowly tearing down some of it, making some more stuff possible, doing this or whatever. So I, I think it's good that some new citizens have showed up, some citizens I haven't seen before. And I think you gotta ask yourself, what do you want? You want ten villages? That's what you're gonna get right now with what zoning is. We'll see what happens with it. Or do you want more of a preservation outlook? So either way, you know, but you got, you, you do have to let your voice be heard. You really do, you know, and it's good, I will say, for the last five or six months, you've had, um, you know, the room pretty much full, which is good. Which is good, I think more people are getting informed. Which is good, and don't be afraid to speak up for what, what's yours. It is your, it is your property. This is your city. You should be proud of it, and you should be able to live in peace, and you should question what you don't like. Anyway, that's, that's all I got. Just make sure if you got a question for me, feel free to call me. Just so you know, I'm not on social media anymore. Anyway.
I have a couple of things to report. One is kind of a little bit long, but um, so we had a senior luncheon last month on March seventeenth. Uh, this is sort of a, a first step and initiative to bring some type of senior services to Chattahoochee Hills. So I want to give a first, a little long list of thanks to people. First, thanks to the city for supporting this. Mayor Ree came and welcomed the guest, and it's always good to have the head of our, the head of our city come and welcome people. Council member Ruby Foster co-coordinated the event, as she does, um, leading all the community outreach events. The city manager and staff were here before and after the event, setting up the room, and I certainly appreciate that. Hey. Community Brickworks, um, they, they had this awesome website now, and they were able to do the online registration for us. They also provided the main entree for the luncheon. And I wanted to personally thank board chair Lisa Remley and library and activities director Nan McGuffey. Providence Church was the co-host for the event as well. And particularly, I wanna thank Kenneth and Elaine Bryant, who coordinated the volunteers who served and brought desserts and sides for the meal. And that's a big deal. We didn't charge anything for this event, and it was a lovely luncheon, so we really appreciate that. The ladies from the church also made um, goodie bags for everyone, which was kind of nice. Their Reverend Mike Emmett um, gave the invocation. And church members Bill and Nisha Bryant provided the musical entertainment, which was just simply lovely. We had some outstanding presenters. We had Andre Gregory, who's the program manager of Fulton County Senior Services. And he gave a pretty good explanation uh, of orientation of the services they offer and uh, their willingness to work with Chad Hills to try to um, bridge the gap here a little bit, fingers crossed. One of our residents, Jill Hines, is the associate director of community outreach for AARP. She gave a wonderful presentation, and I learned something, even though I've been a member for a number of years now, that there's no age limit to join AARP. And she said, you know, they, they kind of did away with that, when you think about it. She said, when she was a teenager, she moved to another uh, state to help support her grandmother. And AARP sees this going on and on with intergenerational families supporting each other now, so yay, go for that. Of course, our very own chief Brett gave the um, safety presentation, and we appreciate that. After the program, we offered comment cards to ask the seniors. About sixty people attended this event and asked them what their concerns were, with what kind of programs they'd like in Chattahoochee Hills. Uh, biggest concerns, I think they said, was they'd like to age in place in Chattahoochee Hills, so that requires a bit of effort. They're concerned about home care services, they'd like that, and a future program on estate planning. Also interesting was, they were very interested in land conservation options. When you think about as you age, if you have a lot of property, people may want to be interested in options for lowering their tax or potentially um, learning more about the transfer development right programs. And their biggest concern was maintaining their quality of life and being able to drive in the city as traffic and population increases. The other thing I wanted to mention is, um, the last council meeting uh, was well-attended. If you weren't here, listen, you might wanna watch the video. We don't even charge admission for that one. Um, it was fueled in part by residents who had a lot on their mind and wanted to voice their concerns. And that's um, that in turn gave me a lot of pause too. Thinking about, you know, since I do live in the rural district, and even though I'm on five acres, I don't think that's inconsequential, as one person said, that they thought it was. I went back to the property tax records and I was amazed at the people in my district, three, who are on one acre or less, three acres or less, five acres or less. All to say, everyone who lives here, owns property or even rents, is consequential. But it got me to thinking about our land use in the history of it. And for those who didn't come, um, you missed a really great impromptu history lesson given by Steve Nygren, who uh, just sort of gave the overall vision and, and his work in creating the Chattahoochee Hill Country Overlay, which later was adopted by Fulton County and was later adopted uh, as the foundation for our zoning here. But that got me to thinking, you know, our city population has increased by one-third since that time. And so a third of people or more did not participate in our first comprehensive plan or they didn't even know about the history of our zoning. So I um, asked Steve Nygren and Tom if they would contribute um, original source documents they had from that time and going forward. And if, if you don't know, I manage and maintain a Chatt Hills history website. So my plan is to archive that information on the website and start writing a monthly overview to sort of educate anyone who wants to know where the history of our zoning started, how it changed with the three major comp plans, and then to look and assess at this again. Are we at the right point we need to? There seems to be some, some interest from residents in rolling back some of the zoning. It might be worth taking a look at, but before we do that, we just kind of need to understand why we made those changes in the first place. So I just wanted to mention, um, I'm gonna be working on that. I do write a monthly newsletter for my district, which is also available on my website for anyone who wants to read it. Or you can send me an email and I'll let you, I'll subscribe you to the email list. That's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Laurie. No, I just wanted to um, welcome Christine Gallagher to, and thank I just went south. Can you hear me? That was weird. And thank you for volunteering um, day one, right? But honestly, I think what you will be doing, I see Rodney out there too, as far as the balancing the competing interests that we see daily. And as we have our seventy thirty, it has been in place. Um, and as we have our seventy thirty, it has been in place and is preserving the character of the community. So, uh, I do look forward to sort of working with you and hearing your recommendations and just thanks a ton for stepping up and doing this role. Very good.
I just want to say that I'm extremely encouraged about the involvement that's taking place here now. A vigorous conversation is important. Uh, there's a lot of change that's, uh, trying to come in and, uh, there's, you know, we've got growing pains and and that's a good thing. But, uh, this conversation has to take place. Thank y'all for being here. Appreciate it. It encourages me in the process. See some, uh, people out there that I've known for years that are involved in this and and, uh, it's, um, it's good that y'all are here. Uh, we're we're listening to you. We're listening. I believe Mr. Thomas Morrow was actually on council in Palmetto, wasn't he? For years. Yeah, so it's it's not their first rodeo. Um, appreciate y'all. Uh, and, uh, one question for Dana, I believe I have, uh, just before I cut out. Did we send out letters or any type of information, uh, in our in our policy as far as letting them know in that area that that there's a permit that might be coming their way or?
Uh, yeah. Letters are sent. Is Katie?
Okay. Okay. All right, so they've been sent. Okay. Let them know, I know we we come up on this issue every time. Um, thank you.
I I want to thank everybody for coming out, too. We're having battery issues or something. You know, uh, well, first thing first, uh, I want to just call out both Greg and Diana because they gave us examples of something today that I think is super important. And that is the people that do the most work oftentimes spend the most time thanking the people that work for them for the work that they've done. And that is what leadership is, I think. And you hear a lot of that in this city, uh, because that's our culture here. And, uh, these people, the small little staff, works really hard for the citizens of the city. And and I just, again, the volunteers, staff, I'm so appreciative of the amount of things that we can get done with this tiny little crew. Always wish there were more of us, but, you know, it's 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 a good group. The other thing I hope that people are taking away from this is that it is really hard to balance the needs of different people that own land in the city. It's tough, right? You've got people that moved to the country because they wanted to be able to shoot their guns somewhere and they're shooting them into a backstop. They feel like it's safe and it is driving the neighbors nuts. And that's a thing. It's a reality. You've got people that own land that they want to do something on. You've got people that don't want their neighbors doing things, right? It is hard to sit up here and try to figure out the right answer to those those different issues, right? And and I I would only ask, I mean, I I'm fine with people being upset with decisions that are made, but don't get upset until the decision's made because there's still a lot of work going on on a lot of these things. And give the process its due. Not saying that people will always be happy with the outcomes because at the end of the day, when two people are asking for different things and their neighbors, somebody's not going to get what they want. And and that's just reality. And again, you know, we, if we're at war, what we're at war with is the two and a half million people that are moving to the Atlanta region over the course of the next twenty years. It's the development that's happening all around us and the huge pressure for development here, too. Right? We never said there wasn't going to be development in Chattahoochee Hills. What we said was, we're going to do it thoughtfully and we're going to preserve as much as we can of the city, at least seventy percent. And we are doing that. We have been doing that. I've been the mayor for twelve years. Look around, right? But the development pressure is here. It's on our doorstep. The need for more police officers is because development is happening outside. It's not because of what's happening here. People complain about traffic in front of their houses on South Fulton Parkway? That's not coming from Chattahoochee Hills, right? So, I mean, just recognize that it's hard work to do this and it takes a lot of, a lot of energy. And nuance is hard, right? It's easy to get up and say, no! Well, sure, but you're saying no to everybody and these are two neighbors wanting opposite things. What's hard is to dig in and try to figure out what the actual best thing for the city is, knowing that we need more money to handle the stuff that's going on around us. We need more money just to pave our roads, right? And and that if you just say no, what happens to you is what happens to the little town that the Rivian plant is in. The state came in and threw out their zoning because they're putting that Rivian plant right there, right? Uh, it's it's like when you say no to the film studio that wants to come and do a project on South Fulton Parkway. Right? I mean, you can't just say no. What you have to say is, well, not that, but can you do this, right? You're trying to shape it into something. And we had a general agreement in the community, including from people that own eight thousand acres that they bought to develop, that this thirty-seventy thing was something that everybody could live with. And again, the nuance of trying to make that happen is just hard. And I would just ask for everybody's thoughtful consideration of the work that's being done and recognizing, too, that, I mean, in in my role, I'm never going to make anybody happy. What I hope is that we come up with a solution that everybody hates the least, right? And that we can move forward with that. And and that's just, that's just my reality of this. Uh, you know, it it is, it is dealing with reality. It's things like, for example, you know, our zoning already allows the one change we made for the movie studio. Our zoning already allows eighty-foot buildings in places in the city where you can't see them. So saying that a studio could have an eighty-foot building that you don't see didn't seem like that big of a stretch. And oh, by the way, if you do that, we're going to get transfer of development right, development rights from you so that we're going to preserve some more land outside of the movie studio that we haven't approved yet. But when it comes here, we're getting more for what we're giving, right? If it gets approved. I'm not saying it's getting approved. So I mean, again, it's easy just to say, wah! It's much harder to be nuanced. We fight for nuance here. Um, we are going to be moving into executive session. Uh, we've got a personnel matter that we're going to be dealing with. My guess is this might take a while. When we come back, we're going to adjourn and that will be it, uh, tonight. So you are welcome to stay. Please stay if you want. Uh, but there's not going to be much happening after this, uh, if if you don't stay.
The movie on the twenty-nine?
Absolutely, please do. Hang on, we haven't adjourned yet. Just sorry, just one 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 second.
That's right.
Because we do want you to hear about the movie night.
That's right. April twenty-ninth, Saturday, um, is the first movie night of the year. And they'll be playing Field of Dreams over here at Rico Ballpark. And several people have made wonderful donations in the art farm. Uh, at Serenby's also sponsoring a kids' music fun, which is called Cupcake Concert, where kids get to come and play some percussion instruments and go home with a cupcake later. So, uh, we're intertwining some fun things in the beginning. So that will start, um, gates open at six-thirty AM, PM. God, that'd be early. Would be the whole day. That'd be a long movie. Yes, so there, city has a popcorn machine if you happen to have smell that when you come in some, not some nights. Um, but Ruby has been organizing. I'm just helping and I think it'll be, it'll be a fun night. But six-thirty PM, gates open. Then we'll do the cupcake concert, kids' fun around seven PM. And the movie will start at sunset when we can see it on the screen, so thank you.
Each kid will go home with the instrument, um, and a cupcake and then the movie star.
Do you not want to hear it anymore?
But, um, also, we want to, Community Brickwork has a lot of activity coming up. So they have a poster outside, uh, some of the things that's coming up. So Nan, is Nan still here? Oh, she's she's gone. But anyway, um, they're going to be doing a Mother's and, um, Mother's Day, um, tea or something like that. She has more details on it. And that's like May sixth or something like that. So to get more information, um, the contact stuff is out on the board. Thank you so much.
It's also on the the website for Brickworks and you brought up Art Farm. Art Farm has a really cool video out right now that, the history of the zoning. So, uh, I'll make a point of getting that on the website, too. Uh, can I get a motion in a second, please, to move out of the regular session for the executive session? We have a motion in a second. Uh, let me get a vote on that, please, to move out of the regular session. All right, so we are going to go off and do this thing and we'll see you later.